All right, so good evening. We're going to go ahead and call to order the Joint School Committee meeting for Dover Sherburne. And it is January 14th at 6:30 PM. So with that being said, we have a forum, and we're going to go ahead and get started. First, we would like to open it up to community comments. Before we start with community comments, just to keep in mind, the way that these go is we want to keep the dialogue respectful and try to only present new information. If somebody's presented something that you were getting ready to say, they've just saved you a little bit of time. So unless you have something new to present, we'll just continue in that fashion.
And save the start time comments?
Yeah, and save the start time comments because we're going to have a presentation. So it may help answer some of your comments.
So we'll have two comment opportunities?
Yeah, so we'll have two. We'll do this one, and then we're going to do the presentation, and then we'll have other community comments with regards to start time if that's what your interest is. So with that being said, are there community comments on start time related? Okay. All right, then with that being said, we'll start with our reports. The first one is the Assistant Superintendent report. You ready?
Thank you.
Ms. McCord?
So I'll be brief. I provided information about our December 2nd full day of professional development, as well as some of the lessons learned from the professional development that our teachers have been doing outside of the district. When I arrived to DS as an educator in 2017, I know there was a lot of conversation about professional development and taking advantage of the expertise that we have in the district, as well as making it practical things that teachers can use every day. So I thought that providing you some of the feedback of both using the teacher's expertise from DS and how things like project-based learning and ideas from Finland are actually concretely taking hold in each of the classrooms. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Can I just say thank you so much for sharing all that? I thought it was really interesting, and I also loved that you shared some of the teacher feedback from the professional development.
That's great.
I thought that was really informative, so thank you.
Thank you. I tried to pick the major themes out that were patterns.
Yeah.
I thought the sessions were interesting, too. I looked through all those sessions, and there were some that I thought just as a community education would look nice. I enjoyed this.
It was incredibly robust.
It was.
A lot of choice and...
Yeah, thank you. And it was all the teachers, you know, literally I put the spreadsheet together and created the Google forum, and they did all the hard work. So we have some really talented teachers here, and I feel lucky every day, both as a parent and as an educator, as part of this district.
I noticed there wasn't much feedback from the superintendent's Twitter presentation.
No. It's not it, right? You got it all orally because you're there.
Forty pairs left, right?
We can make it up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, too, that I think it's so great that you're making time for the teachers in our own district to collaborate with each other because, you know, it's great to bring outside people into, but we have so many great people here with skills that they might not even know each other has, so that was great.
And I think it especially helps with the continuity for the elementary schools to kind of see what each side does and how they enrich in things they do. So I think that was a real benefit for Pine Hill and Chikering.
Yeah. And can I just give you one more example that happened today, just because I'm a pedagogical nerd? So Kelly Minis and Scott Huntune from the high school recently, through the DSCF grant, were able to go to the National Education English Teachers Association conference about inquiry in the English class over at high school level. And Kelly came back talking about giving students options and how they demonstrate their learning, which was fantastic. And Scott wrote about giving students an opportunity to show their thinking and making connections visually in a way that appeals to them. And I said, you know, I wrote back, I said, "This is wonderful. Perhaps you can share it with your other high school colleagues because I can assume that it would be, you know, applicable in other districts beyond English." And then Kristy Bloncik in the Science Department pulled me into her classroom this afternoon and said, "Look what I did with my physics students. I had them take two different units and create visual representations of how all the strategies connect together." I was like, "Oh, my God, you have talked to Scott Huntune," so it's all the same stuff.
That's great. All right. Thank you. So if there are no other questions, we'll move on then to the superintendent report.
Yes. For whatever reason, I didn't have a lot to bring to the joint committee, and I was kind of looking forward to having a lot to bring to the joint committee because I hadn't been bringing it to the separate ones. But I did, you know, obviously share that we did our second newsletter of the year from the central office, and I think those have been well received. They're a great opportunity for us to give people a kind of a glance inside the administration. It's always important for people to kind of know what's on our minds. We can be very distant even when we're in that little house over there. And so I wanted to thank Beth for her help with that, and obviously gave you a link to that. The Communication and Start Times Task Forces, yes, they are still continuing to meet. This is ongoing work. I don't know that it's necessarily going to go away anytime soon because we'll always be addressing these two things. Obviously, I'll do a presentation on the Start Times Task Force work later on this evening, but I'm going to actually ask that the communications information be passed along at the individual meetings because it's not as detailed, and I think I can just kind of do that quickly in those individual meetings if that's okay with you guys. Just a reminder that we'll have our workshop, the MAS C workshop with Dorothy Presser on the 22nd at 5:30 in the library. If we can fit in the conference room, we'll use the principal's conference room, but otherwise we'll meet here. I know Dorothy very well. She's a fantastic individual and a really experienced school committee member, and I think that's going to be kind of like our professional development. You know, we work as a team, so I think that would be really helpful. As always, you know, how often do you hear, especially when Beth is speaking about kind of work that's gone on in the system, things that connect back to the work of the DSCF and the generosity of the DSCF? I can't thank them enough. They are really lighting a flame of inspiration across the system, and I know that when I've made donations to the DSCF in the past, that's really what I'm hoping for, that the teachers have the tools that they need to really get excited about teaching because that is passed on to kids. So I want to thank them again. Just so that everybody knows, this is really mostly to Sherburne. We talked about it a little earlier. We are still trying to work out the kinks on upgrading the access road in Sherburne so that it would be a complete exit road, actually. That's not an easy task, but I just wanted you all to be aware so that if you heard about it through the grapevine, you wouldn't be blindsided. It's, from our perspective, it's really, it's a safety issue, and it's long overdue. So that's something that we're looking into. And unfortunately, we was not able to hold our emergency response team, but we've got some pretty cool stuff going on. Obviously, we've come a long way with our security work as a system, and there are still some pretty neat things that we want to look into. People have talked to me in the past about concerns about not being able to report things anonymously, and I always have a mixed reaction because I feel like we're approachable, but I also understand that sometimes kids especially don't want to reveal themselves if they're concerned about someone or something. And so we're looking into a program that might allow us to do that. So that's a good thing that the ERT is meeting, and we'll get that back on track.
The Pine Hill access road, you say in here, the engineering study has to be funded, and then the road itself. Do each of those funding things have to go to town meeting?
More than likely, yes, right?
So does that mean it's going to take like two years?
Could.
Yeah, okay.
You know, the alternative is you find a way to do it with existing funds, and it's not cheap.
No.
And then you bring it, and people are like, "Who even approved the study?"
No, I appreciate living in Sherburne.
Right. But if there's grant money available for the road itself, and we could expedite this in any way, we're going to try and do that.
Okay, great.
So it's very much a work in progress.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, next we'll move on to our Student Services update. Ms. Kate McCarthy and Naomi O'Brien.
Do we want to try to put the PowerPoint up?
We can.
Is it on your...
Did you send it to me?
It's to Cheryl. She put it in the packet, but it's not, I can, everyone got it.
We have it in the packet. We have it in the packet. I don't think I have it, Kate.
Do you want us to send it?
Is it on a drive?
It was on Google Docs.
Can you send me the link?
A lot have it on there.
Somebody could send me the link. I could probably bring it up.
Hold on. So again, I'm Kate McCarthy. I know we were here, I think, October 7th, Director of Student Services.
Naomi O'Brien, I'm the Elementary Special Ed Coordinator.
So thank you for having us. We had talked about coming back with a little more information, a few more tasks completed or progress towards completion in October. So we have, kind of when you see the presentation, kept the focus on the three main areas that we were looking at in coming to these positions and after the reorg and looking at the consistency across all three districts in logistical special education ways, as well as services, why we provide services, is it consistent, and are the experiences of students consistent? When you look at guidance, special education, and nursing, the student services three buckets, and Naomi, especially with the elementary special education. So we're just going to go through, and please ask questions or jump in as I go along and we go along. So the first piece on special education alignment, we have been doing, as we were preparing this presentation, it's clear we have a lot of meetings. So a lot of the things that we're doing, we're meeting with a lot of groups, and we are checking in on all of these goals with the different groups that we meet with. So one of the very important, I think, pieces to our role are a lot of positions that are similar across all four buildings. So the BCBA's, the P, we have one PT for the whole district, so that was an easy meeting. And we have the SLPs, the OTs, and school psychologists. So those are just some specialist groups that we meet with monthly and just hear how things are going, what the criteria they're using is, what their reports look like. So those are some good points that we have been learning a lot about consistency of supports and structure.
And what those look like from building to building and working with kind of cohorts of similar, obviously, jobs to help in that facet.
Are we asking as we go along or are we waiting to the end?
I think now, but it's your rules. I think now is good for me, but it's up to you.
Just so you keep saying "we," so is it both of you are doing most of these? And then next year with the potential addition to the...
Secondary coordinator.
Secondary coordinator, would that be the all three of you plus the others?
Yes. So I can clarify that a little better. So when we have department meetings at each building, Naomi generally leads the elementary meetings, and I attend two a month for each building. So the elementary level pieces, Naomi takes the lead, and I'm generally there to participate. And then at the region level, I'm the one kind of running the department meetings and things like that. We've split up some of the elements, like Naomi's background is a BCBA. So the groups that she works with are more of the BCBA groups, and then I was a school psychologist. So like, there are certain things that we divvy up, not necessarily by level, but it is generally, we combine.
Yeah. And then Kate and I obviously communicate with one another, so we are always consistently looping each other in. And if I do have a meeting with the BCBA's, we obviously communicate with one another. The OTs, we tend to piggyback just because there's a lot kind of going on in that realm, so we tend to do those together.
Around self-study and things like that. But as we go along, I think we can clarify the different pieces that we both have. Another element is the weekly meeting. So this is a very important part when we're thinking, in thinking about special education alignment, just the nitty-gritty of paperwork, we meet with all of the team chairs from across all four buildings, as well as our administrative assistant that does more of the special education processing. So we're checking through, we made a master list, and we're just putting in more systems about what's going out, what documents are coming back, and having alignment across all four buildings. So we're all at that one.
I think what we had found as we kind of started working was that even within the two elementary schools I can speak to, like timelines were different. Everyone was kind of operating on a different schedule, and I think in terms of having a lot of positions that are in both buildings, there was just a lot of confusion, and so we've kind of really worked to just having consistency so that people are across buildings, it's the same, so that parents understand what to expect, kind of all of those pieces. So that's certainly been helpful.
Great. So on the next item, support for all students. One of the great parts about this year for us has been the development and the addition of a lot of key staff members, so counseling supports, BCBA supports, really even our roles and how that looks for students, as well as two programs. So the goals program that Naomi will talk a little bit more about, and the GRIT program with the middle school, social-emotional program. So we have regular meetings with those programs. We're observing, we're in meetings, team meetings for those programs as they're new, and the criteria is, you know, being developed, I think would be a good way to say it. So I think constant contact with the support staff in those programs. I can speak, do you want us to first start talking about goals?
Sure. So in the goals program, so I sit in weekly on their consults where they are talking about kids, and then we just kind of hearing how the kids are doing, if I haven't, you know, been in the loop about certain things, and then in turn figuring out what the next steps are, and obviously communication with parents, if there are meetings that need to be set, those sorts of pieces. But I think a lot of the work has been working with the staff around criteria for programming, so why students require certain programming versus students that might really be able to be in a lesser, less restrictive environment, more in inclusion in their general education classrooms, and really working with staff around kind of their thoughts, feedback, and kind of hearing what's working and what's not. I think in any really beginning of a program, in the first beginning years, there's a lot of conversation around like entrance and exit criteria. Why do certain students need certain things to get through the day and certain students don't? And I think we're just trying to make sure that we are addressing student need in a real individualized, from a real individualized standpoint, and making sure that all kids are kind of getting what they need. Just because a child has a certain disability doesn't mean they necessarily require a certain program, and vice versa. So kind of just working through some of those pieces, and I think the feedback's been really good. The staff has been really open and responsive to having those conversations, so I think it continues to be a work in progress, which is very much to be expected. But I think the feedback from both staff and families and student progress has been really good, so.
And how many kids are in program in each building? And what capacity?
So in goals, there's, I'm sorry, I'm going to take a brief count. There are six in the goals program.
And at the middle school, there are, and this is one of the pieces I was going to talk about, there are certain tiers within the program. So some students are in the program, have it on their IEP as a place that they're attending, and it's in their schedule. And then we have other students that are accessing the home base, and it's kind of a step down from that. So we're using the program, I think, a little wider than it was initially rolled out to be. So I think that number fluctuates a little bit. I would say the most we would have in the program would be 20, but we're not there yet, but we are more than the four that, or five that, we had five and one student move, so we're at four now, so. So, and then the other piece I was going to just add about the middle school program has been the just excitement about it and the staff members really wanting to know more. The two staff, the teacher and the counselor have been scheduled to present at lots of different faculty meetings. They were just successful this past week. There was snowy situations and even just after-school time. So the staff really was hoping for that meeting and got a lot out of it, and we are, and the staff members in the GRIT program are visiting the teams in the middle school that have students that might be accessing the support. So we're in constant communication. And again, I think with the supports being new, I think it's been beneficial for people to even learn. We've had Jessica Minahan come in and present in December, and I think people are really excited about more of that, and we're going to have her back later in the year to dive deeper with us. So I think the area of social-emotional supports is a very interesting one to a lot of teachers, and we're trying to gather more supports for that, too, as students go up through high school as well.
And just to speak a little bit to what we were talking about at first, in terms of consistency of services across buildings and kind of how we're like doing business, for lack of a different word, around services, I think it has helped us to figure out what kids require and what kids need and what kind of these specialized, who these specialized programs are really going to kind of work for and what kids don't require in them. So I think it's been like a really intertwined process, which has been nice.
And another just element in the support for all students is just a path for collecting data as to how this is going and how this is looking really district-wide. We have two different consultants, almost the Bright program that the center follows and Bridge follows at the high school. We were just at a presentation at Chikering earlier today on that. From that, so we're in, Naomi and I have spoken with people from Brighton. We're just looking at how that looks, it's in two pockets, so how does that look district-wide for us? And we also have someone coming in and working with the programs at all three levels, and they come in monthly and work with the clinical group. And we've actually been trying to think about how to use that in more of a K-12 way, even though there's a social-emotional program in Dover, and looking at knowing their social-emotional programming in Pine Hill and what does that look like, and trying to support that and make that look really consistent across the two elementary schools. So last bucket, I call it, building relationships. So really, the most important one for us because with everything that we've been working on, if we don't have relationships and trust and the belief of the staff, then we really are nowhere. But so I'm happy to report that through a lot of meetings and a lot of visits, too, I think Naomi and I have both gone to parent group meetings. We have more to come, and we are meeting with not just, you know, Naomi is the special education coordinator, but she's also meeting with, you know, full staff. She just went and, you want to talk about the Pine Hill?
Yep, so I've done staff meetings, just kind of very informal, like, talk to me about how the year is going. Obviously, even though I'm more focused on special ed programming, it impacts the school as a whole, so we've had pretty good conversations around just how things are going from just like the standpoint of a teacher and things like that. And I think more so just being very available, that we know this is a growth year and a year of some change, and that's okay, and like, we want the feedback. I think teachers have been very open to that and have kind of enjoyed that system where they feel like they can come talk to us. And I would say similarly with parents, the parents, either meetings I've sat in on, or I've had a lot of parents call me, and we've had just really good conversations. So I think that's gone really well, just kind of really working on that relationship piece and being very transparent about where we're at and where we'd like to go, and just kind of having those open and honest conversations with all different people has been, I think, nice and helpful.
It's hard to measure relationships, but the way I think about it is if people are using you as a resource and reaching out to you, that's really been what's been standing out for me and what's been nice. I am in four buildings, but even with that, I have either full days or half-days in each building each week, and so I've been able to not just have meetings with people, but say, both lunches at the high school, I'm going to be in this room every Tuesday. So I think through that, people just come in and eat their lunch because I plot myself where a lot of people eat lunch, but I think it's been really a benefit to not just be in meetings and people watch you present things, but to also just say, "I just had a class and the student did this thing. Can we just talk about, you know, how I should have maybe done that different or ideas you have?" So I think that when people reach out and people understand the role, because I think my role in particular reaches so many items with guidance, nursing, and special education that what I like to say, even though it makes me busy, is try me first because I'll generally know where to send you if it's not me. So I think people have been open to that and have been reaching out frequently to both of us, really.
And I would say similarly at the elementary, we, you know, I certainly don't want to make people feel like they have to go to more meetings, so we've kind of left like open office hours almost. Like, I will be here at these times, and the door is always open, and you're welcome to come in, and both special ed staff and regular ed, Janet's staff has come in and kind of had discussions, which has been nice. And I always, well, like, I like that. It gives me more insight as to what's going on and where people's kind of heads and thinking are at, so it's been beneficial.
Okay. So then on the next steps front, I talked about this a little bit more, but some of the, through some of the programming that we've added and some of the staffing that we've added, more of the structured programming for social-emotional supports at the high school in Pine Hill don't necessarily mirror Chikering or the middle school at the moment. So that's something we're looking into and how we could do that. I think at the high school, there's a way to do that with the current staff that we have, so we've been talking with people about that. And honestly, people are doing amazing things on a regular basis, so it's just being clear about routes to finding the right supports and making sure there aren't hurdles and obstacles to do that.
And I would say like communicating clearly, obviously, with you guys and the parents in the community just about what is in each building and what those kind of services or things look like, and just kind of clarifying some of those because there's definitely been a little confusion, so we know that, and just trying to kind of clear those things up.
And I think just continuing a lot of the things we had already talked about with being more visible, coming to kind of more of the general-led school meetings because it really is, you know, it takes a few times for people to hear about the reorg and to hear what resources you bring to have it really sink in, so that, just continuing a lot of that work that we've already talked about. On that, yes?
Thank you for taking the time to spend with us. Do you, you probably maybe, I don't think you talked about this, but I know this is a sort of building year for you, you know, because you, we had a lot of ideas, we put a lot of things into place. What are you going to do in terms of, you know, evaluation and adjustment? Do you have a plan for that?
For what?
For example, for the GRIT program, for the new structures, for, you know, is this working or isn't it, you know?
Right. I think...
Or let me rephrase that. What's working really well, what could be working a little bit better, I think is more what I meant.
I think that that's happening kind of in the moment pretty regularly. One of the things, GRIT's a perfect example. I think when GRIT was created and began, it was, I think people understood it as a special education program that only special education students were accessing. I think as we've had students come up that really didn't need a full program the way it was created and really just needed a space, which is not special education even, it was really just a home base and a kind of de-stressing area. I think we've been able to, in a very concise way, there's a GNA meeting at the middle and the high school that I attend. It's called Guidance and Administration, and it's all the guidance counselors and administrators in the building. And we just, you know, hear about how students are doing, and through that, sometimes we have grit at that meeting, too, and sometimes through that meeting we'll say, you know, this really sounds like somebody who could, through their H block, maybe check in, or so some of that happens in the moment through those processes. I have, every other week, I check in with GRIT to, you know, observing the classes, but to just hear how they are feeling and also hear how the students that we have even thought about having access to the program that didn't begin that way, how they're doing. Was that a right referral? So I think in the moment, we are, there are those conversations, and I think overall, that meeting that I talked about is one of the best ways that I'm learning about how the resources are being accessed and how, I think things are going very, very, very well. So I'm just, and I'm, in doing this presentation, too, is, you know, how do you quantify and then how do you, how do you see that? The way I see it on a weekly basis is hearing the different students that are accessing the supports that we've put into place. Does that answer your question?
We will also be able to check that data. That data that Dorothy and Deb collected for us can, you know, is accessible to us, too. So we can, you know, check annually to see if we're seeing a reduction in calls for outplacements for kids with the more severe emotional issues, or calls for outplacements of younger students on the autism spectrum disorder spectrum. So we should be able to... So, so we should be able to just look at our own data compared to where we were.
Yeah, I think, and I, just to follow up on that, I, I think it's really important to have some sort of evidence-based data that shows that the programs are working and that we're, we're, they're meeting the goals that we want to meet. You know, I guess a comment, no longer a question.
And sometimes that data, sorry, is more, if this program wasn't in existence, X, Y, and Z student would be out of, sometimes, sometimes that data's a little less-
Right.
...clear. But I will say, one of the things, and you had asked kind of what's going well, what could go better. And I, it's not a what could go better, but I think one of the tasks of having four different buildings in lockstep on a lot of things has probably been what we've focused the most time on because of how much we respect the culture of each building and don't want people to feel like we're coming in wanting people to be like robots, everyone does the same thing. So trying to find that balance, I think, again, isn't like a not going great, but it's just something that we've spent a long time.
And I, I think we, for those who are involved in the special ed review and kind of the whole reorg conversations, you know, we talked about that a lot, that these things take time. And the building of the relationships is absolutely critical because if you think about what goes wrong with special education frequently, it's a breakdown in the communication or trust. That's frequently where the issue is. And in order for Kate or Naomi to really impact that particular issue, they have to establish trusting relationships with the staff, trusting relationships with the parents. And as much as we all wish it would be quick, I remember saying this when I first started, that it takes time to really get to know people unfortunately. There's no speeding it up. But I, I will tell you from my perspective that the feedback that I have gotten has been exponentially better. And I don't, I think a lot of it has to do with, in fact, this part that you're there, getting into these meetings, getting to know people. And unfortunately, we've had a structure that didn't allow the director the time to really do that. We didn't have as much close proximity kind of administrative support. And that's why we did this. And I do think it's having an impact. I think the adminis, I know the administrators in the buildings have told me that, and so have teachers and families. So that's a good sign.
Sorry, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, you probably just explained this. So in the first bullet, when you talk about developing structures and supports for high school in Pine Hill, how are they different from Chicaring and middle school? What's happening that's different? Why are they-
There's already different supports in, after our buildings.
Right.
It's more in the programmatic structure. So right now, there are school psychologists at both buildings, there's counselors at both buildings at the elementary level. And there is, so I think there's similar staffing, but there's not as much of a place or a location at Chicaring. There is a place and location at Chicaring and there isn't necessarily a program and a place in Pine Hill. I think students' needs are being met in both places, but it's just, it's a wonder about what the difference is there and what different impact that has on students. At the middle and high school level, the high school has Bridge, which is more, it's, it's meant to be a short-term model for both special education and general education students. And it has a counselor and it has an academic component. But we, but where GRIIT is a home-based model in special education and is not short-term, we're wondering if a model like that at the high school would be necessary.
Good questions. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have, sorry. Are you, I see, John behind you, are you working together? There's been talk about advisory and I would think that that would, have you guys been talking about that? Is that something you've been working together on for that?
We have, right. They're investigating a K to 12 curriculum that would be SEL, social and emotional learning related. And it would be something that we could then incorporate into our advisory.
That's great. Anybody else? Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and work on this.
Thank you.
So, next we have Dr. Keo, the superintendent goals review.
Yes. So, this is kind of a lengthy document and I apologize for that. But I think it was last year, we decided to go back to kind of a review of my progress towards meeting the goals by talking about the key actions and benchmarks. I don't think I need to necessarily read through each of those unless you'd like me to. But what I can do is kind of quickly remind you of what the goals, what I, goals I set for myself. And I think you can then assess, 'cause you've been intricately involved in watching this, my progress towards meeting these. Remember, the whole point of this is that when we get to the end of the year, you have to do an evaluation of me. And every single one of you has to complete the same evaluation forms. Some of you have done it and some of you have not. And, or if you did, it was confusing. So the, the important piece is this, that there are standards set by the state by which each superintendent is evaluated. And underneath those standards, there are elements. And so under each goal, I try to tell you which standard it speaks to in the state's rubric and which indicator. So if you were to Google superintendent evaluation tool, you'll find it, the very one that you'll get in the spring. But I think it's helpful for you to be involved in this and hear, hear directly from me and actually have this document in your hand when you go to do that in the summer. It's just the right way to evaluate a superintendent. So my first goal was obviously this preparing for the transition for our start times, new schedule. That, that's been a key focus of mine this year, as you know. Start times task force phase two, the implementation of that, the subcommittees that we're focusing on, various aspects of how this thing rolls out. You'll hear more about that in a few minutes. I feel like that's been, that we've been fairly successful with that. One of the things that I have figured out on the start times piece was that last year's process and this year's process are actually two entirely different things. Last year's process was really about my educating all of you, my educating the community as best I could by way of bringing in experts and speakers and coffees and PTO presentations. That was really about the start times task force, bringing it out there to people, sharing the research that we found, making that accessible to people, and then ultimately rendering a decision as to what we thought should be done. That was start times task force working hand-in-hand with me and my coming to the joint school committees and making the recommendation in April of 2019. This year is really about, it's a really very different thing. It's, now it's like, okay, so we're doing it. So what are the challenges that we need to iron out? How does this impact afternoon schedules at the elementary level? How does this impact afternoon schedules at the secondary level? How does it impact before-school schedules at those two levels? The, how does it impact athletics? How does it impact the day-to-day schedule? Are there things that we're gonna do differently? Earlier this evening, somebody was asking about precess. You know, so these are the things that the start times task force phase two are looking at now. So that's a really different piece. And I think that I went into this thinking it's the exact same process, but it really isn't. It's really different. So I feel pretty good about my progress towards that goal. And I'll, you know, I'll leave that to you to ultimately decide. My second goal was really about continuing the work of the communications task force. The communications task force has met, I wrote it in here, I can't remember if it was four or five times this year. We, we are making headway with our communications. We are really trying hard to, to have things like coffees and to have events where people can hear from the administration about what's going on and to send out newsletters. But the, but the real issue of the communications task forces, how do we streamline the communication? So if you have kids at three different levels, you're not getting bombarded with emails or redundancies. Or you can look at one calendar and not have to, you know, wonder what's going on at Chicaring when the middle school's having its Friday evening event. Those are the things that we're working on right now as a task force, and it's slow. We are also, we're also talking about branding and how do we, how do we not so much brand Dover Sherbent so that we can sell more Dover Sherbent shirts, 'cause that's not our objective. But what we would like is for people to, who visit our schools electronically, to know exactly what we stand for. And if you look at the most outstanding schools in America, you will see that. They, they sell their message, about what it is they stand for, in a quick front page, front page of their website. So we are looking at that. That's a process. We have a lot on our plates. We have a lot on our plates. We've taken on a lot. The start times thing is a lot of work for everyone. It means a significant change for everyone. And I'm just not sure that we have the bandwidth, frankly, to, to make a website change in the next few months or the finances. But, but it is on our list. And sometimes you just have to prioritize these things. But the communications task force work has been, has been productive. The, my third big goal was about, you know, working with Kate and Naomi on this transition to a student services model. And I personally couldn't be happier about that. As far as I'm concerned, it's one of the bigger things that, that I've done here. Because it was a real crying need according to the people. This is what people were telling me. We needed to look more closely at how we were operating with regard to special education and student services in general, counseling services, social-emotional services and supports. I feel like that has really come together because we've hired two exceptionally strong people who aligned with our vision. And the vision was laid out by the special education review. So it's really dovetailed nicely and I, I feel great about that. I feel like that's something that we should all really be very proud of, as many of you were involved in that. The fourth goal I have, it's really about continuing to connect with area superintendents. Contrary to popular belief, the superintendent position can actually be pretty isolating. And we, we don't get out enough or connect with people enough. And it's really, really important for me to connect with superintendents about the things they're working on. That's sort of my professional development, so I've been really trying to do that. And generally speaking, I come away feeling better when I hear the stories of things that they're dealing with. So, you know, because, you know, the, the work is hard. So I'm continuing with that. Again, we've been very busy, but I also have benefited tremendously from working with Matt King. And I, I wanna thank the committees for recommending that when I first came here to, to work with a coach. It's just helpful to me. It's helpful to have someone who's been in the chair, who's done the job due process with. Matt is an experienced superintendent from Wellesley. He's training superintendents. He really knows his stuff and he's been a huge help to me. So I wanna thank you guys for that. And then finally, I think it's finally, is the work that really Beth leads, but I worked with her on to kind of oversee. Because after all, the teaching and learning that goes on in this system is critical. And Beth doesn't need a lot of hand-holding. She's a self-starter. But we have spent a lot of time honing our vision, making sure it aligns with our strategic plan and our key actions outlined in the action plan. So I've also attached for your review, the, the action steps. So these are really, you'll see in the left-hand column, those are the kind of strategic objectives. And there were five of them, I believe. Innovative teaching, I should be able to list these off the top of my head. Well, whatever, yes. So you know, you know what they are. The resource efficiency, the emotional well-being of our kids. These all have subcategories that we're working on. And I've given you kind of a report on our progress in comparison to year one, and now we're in year two. And so next year, we'll be looking at this again to see what we want to do in terms of change. So that, that's pretty much Beth's story. Hopefully you've had a chance to, to take a look at it.
Okay, may I make questions?
I should have a comment to the group for, for all of us, 'cause there's a lot going on and there's a lot in these goals. For us, as the remainder of the meetings and through the end of the year, just kind of keep these in mind because this is what kind of like a status check for us as we do an evaluation at the end of the year to see how we're benchmarking, how the district, how Dr. Keo and the team are benchmarking against these goals. So we'll probably get continual updates and just, whenever we hear an update, see if it tracks back to one of these initiatives and see how we're going there. So it's a great sort of reminder when we do the evaluations that we just sort of check in to see how we did from one year to the next. And thank you for the, for the update.
Do you think it would be helpful, I think Anne, we talked about the, to send out the blank evaluation fairly early or imminently so that, you know, people who weren't not familiar could then have something to match it with?
Why don't we pass it out? It would be a good thing to do at the workshop because-
That's a good idea. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Because if it's your first time and it's a little different.
I'll bring-
Right.
Hard, I'll bring hard copies. We'll talk about that. I don't wanna, I wanna be environmentally sensitive.
One, one thing that I think we should all feel good about is that as a system, we are pulling in the same direction. And that can be tough. Any of you who work in large organizations know, it's really difficult at times to know if everyone's pulling in the same direction or if it's just, I'm working in my silo, I do what I have to do. But we are actually all working on the same goals and pulling in the same direction. And I think it shows, frankly. I think it's really a positive. Thanks. I feel good about that.
Thank you, Dr. Keo.
Sure.
So now the strategic initiative task force reports, school start time.
Yes. So, so what I'd like to do is, is go through the presentation. Just give me a second to turn this on and knock the lights down. Thanks, Henry. I think you can just do the first one to the right. All right. And so, and by the way, I will send you the link to this slideshow tomorrow. It's, it's the teacher in me that doesn't wanna give it out during the presentation 'cause I know you'll be looking at that and not listening to it. So, but first I wanna thank all of the, the committee members for allowing us, and by that I mean the start times task force phase two, to present this evening. I, I wanna thank all those members for coming tonight and really for their many efforts throughout this year and last in many instances. And before I go directly to the presentation, I wanna, I wanna give everyone kind of a quick refresher on why we decided as a school system to make this change last April. So first and foremost, the research of our students that was conducted by Stanford on behalf of Challenge Success showed a significant deficit in sleep for our teenagers, placing them 2.25 hours behind the average of where they should be according to the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. We saw and continue to see this as a major threat. Our kids are at risk, especially in terms of, of good health, depression, stress, at-risk driving, on and on. And this has really served as the impetus for our decision. Sorry. I don't have a wireless mouse, which is a problem. So of course, throughout this process and prior to making this decision, for those who've been following it, we were thinking about the impacts on our elementary students as well and made the determination that it'll be important to monitor this, the impacts of these changes, of the 45-minute change on them as the new start times go into effect. Further, we determined that we would do all that we could to move our elementary times as close to 8:00 AM as possible through bus efficiencies, hopefully making the change even less impactful for our younger students. even less impactful for our younger students. But to be clear, this decision resulted in a 45-minute earlier start for our elementary students, moving from 8:35 to 7:50 AM. Importantly, it also resulted in a 55-minute later start for our secondary students, moving them from 7:40 to 8:35 AM. These were not really dramatic changes. However, they're changes that we believe will ultimately benefit all of our students as they progress through the system. The second key reason we made this change is that it's something that the district's been considering since 2015. At some point, you can hash it over and hash it over, but at some point you need to make a decision. In fact, the revisitation of start times, that, that question was listed as a priority in the district's strategic plan, which is stakeholder driven. The, the goals outlined in the strategic plan came from the community. This is what the people told me upon my entrance to Dover Sherburne that they wanted addressed. That's where it came from. It's not somebody's agenda. It was driven by the system and the, the district strategic plan is really the guiding document for this school system, as I just mentioned a few minutes ago. But finally, we made this decision that we felt that it was the right move for our system after hearing what sleep experts had to say, after studying the available research, hearing from those in like communities who'd made the change and receiving feedback from a variety of key stakeholders in our community through open forums, coffees and servings. But in order for this change to be successful, we acknowledged that it would take time for our schools and families to adjust. So that's why we bumped the implementation out a year and formed the Start Times Task Force Phase Two to respond to questions and to seek to address the challenges that would arise as a result of the change. Tonight, I'll go through some slides and give a presentation on the work that's been done to date by the task force and then allow for some ti, some questions from the committees before moving directly, oh, sorry. And before moving directly to, to the work that we've been doing, I just want to first show you the most recent iteration of start times planned to go into effect in September of 2020. So on this slide, hopefully you can see that, yes. On this slide, the projected bus pickup times at the elementary level were listed at 6:50 in an earlier iteration, but that was on our web page, webpage for far too long. And I think a lot of people were under the impression that that 6:50 time was in fact the earliest, the, the pickup time. And it's actually 7:00 AM, so I wanted to highlight that. So our working groups are the same working groups we've had. Our first one is the transportation group and Don Fattori has really led that process. What I've done on these slides is because we've, we had some of this information up before, steps taken and decisions made to date, to really update you because that's really what this is since October. One of the things that we've done, I've tried to italicize these and bold the, the new information so you don't have to plow through all of it, but bringing, rooting in-house, so utilizing recommended transportation software. This is feedback that we received. We know that there is software out there, GPS software, that might be helpful. But I don't want to mislead people. We have to remember, we're 20 miles from Boston. We are in both Sherburne and Dover on major commuter routes and there is this nice little app called Waze and people are using it. They're using it to come down through Medfield and Milis to sneak down by Dover Sherburne High School rather than deal with Center or Walpole Street and the lights and they can slip in this way. I mean, the same thing is happening in Sherburne. To avoid the lights in downtown Sherburne, they'll come down what used to be Sleepy Farm Road. It's not anymore. It's like a freeway in the morning. So we have a lot of congestion in these two towns and they span a large expanse. The software may be helpful and we're, we're, we're trying it. We're looking into it and we're hoping, but I, I'm going into it with an open mind, but I, I will believe it when I see it. Because you can't do much about a train that comes at a very different time every day, but it's sort of around seven. And sometimes it's 60 cars and sometimes it's 10. You know, these are, these are really unmanageable things that the best software in the world is not going to be able to help you with unless it's actually beaming satellite images of the, the train when it leaves the station. Maybe that day will come, but I don't think we're there yet. So next, next steps really moving forward is, is finalizing in our bus contract, ensuring that it supports and adjusts to the impacts of the change, insisting upon, for example, GPS, using GPS. And if we can find efficiencies, we will do that. There's no incentive for us not to do that. So we will do that. But we just don't know if it's, it's going to really be practical. In the area of before, elementary before and after-school programming, what we, we had talked about making a decision to expand DETA and SHEETA the last time we talked, we've actually now finalized a two-tiered system to provide flexibility to families. So when you sign up for SHEETA or DETA, you can sign up for a shorter period of time if that suits your family better than others. Can you add anything to that, Don?
So the two tiers are a regular three-hour program, which would run 2:15 to 5:15. And then for those parents that still need the six o'clock pickup, you can add on the last 45 minutes as an extra. So some people may be able to adjust and only still one to three hours. So we are doing the split, the split offering.
And I would say that, you know, similar to what we're talking about here in the next steps where we encourage kind of organic ground-up change based on desires and needs of families. If we find that there is an overwhelming need on the part of the families for expanded, kind of a different kind of schedule or something to that effect, we will respond to it. Remember, we, we were working off of survey data that, that showed 81%, I believe, a family's not relying on it. Not relying on any kind of private childcare. So we're not anticipating huge numbers, but we know that we need to be flexible because people's personal lives and careers, you know, are not all the same.
When we start looking at real numbers or, you know, asking families?
So that process starts, the signup is...
Yeah, the, the letter's going out February 1st for existing families, priority. And then we will follow thereafter. We're asking everyone to let us know, I think the timeline we're looking at is May because we can only plan for what we know in advance. So we're encouraging people not to wait till September and say, raise our hands. If we know in May, then we're, our plan is to get as much staffing as possible to handle capacity.
Okay.
So the priority registration is going out soon and then following that, it's open for like two or three weeks and then it'll go out to everyone else who hasn't participated in our program before.
So by May 1st, we're, have a sense of what the demand is?
Well, yeah, you should know our numbers that are looking to utilize the program.
This kind of speaks to another thing that those of us on the, the Start Times Task Force Phase Two have come to realize is that some of these things, you know, our plan was to report out on all the progress we're making, but some of these things, we're really not going to know until we try this on, until we live in it. And this is why pilots of scheduled changes are really, really tricky. I understand Dover Sherburne did that, I think my children were here for it, where they did a reversal of the half-days, but it was...
It was just one day.
One day. Okay, well, that's not, that's not a, that's not a large enough sample. You know, because you need time to find out what's working and what isn't. And we anticipate that next year will also be somewhat challenging at times. There'll be things that we didn't anticipate. That's just the way it is with change. But we also hope to continue with this committee so that we have a body that's responsive to the, the challenges. The secondary school schedules was probably one of the bigger, the bigger, or is one of the bigger tasks and especially the high school schedule and the kind of before and after-school scheduling at the high school primarily because of performing arts and athletics. Those of you who have children at that age, they're, they are very much involved. John, I know you know the percentage, Mr. Smith, the headmaster of the high schools here with Scott Kellit, the headmaster of the middle school. I know you know the percentage of athletes, students who participate in athletic...
Yeah, it includes in the range of about 80% of our students at some point during the year participated in any of those classes.
And I'm guessing that the, the percentage for performing arts is also high too, when you consider music and drama and musicals and, and so forth. So I will just tell you that since the last time we met, the high school has actually finalized a high school schedule. We will share that with the, our plan was to share it with the regional committee at the February meeting. But I will say that, that the key, some of the, some of the key features are the 53-minute periods, the eight-day rotation, dropping in AM and PM class daily. Is that what you currently have as well, John?
Yes, correct.
So that's not a new thing. The 12-minute morning break, is that a different length of the break? The break is the same. There is a 30-minute flex block at the end of the day. And the 30-minute flex block, I will talk about in a subsequent slide. The middle school schedule is essentially the same. The next steps, we're, we're looking at opportunities because one of the things that has come to light through this process, and I know Anne Deverkeegan is also here, oh, hi Anne, and she was very much involved in this process as well. When we spoke at our last meeting, the, one of the things that has come to light, which is very exciting, is the kind of new ideas that have come out of this. And so in a way, they're a little bit ahead of the elementary schools because they have to do it now. They have to have these conversations right now because their schedule has to be ready for, you know, the opening day in, in August or September. Whereas the elementaries will learn along the way that they want to expand something after school. And so we will, and we'll be able to do that. We want to be flexible to do that. And we don't want to take away things that have worked for us. For example, precess at the elementary schools has become really popular. And for those who don't know, precess is, is when the kids are getting dropped off before the start of school. Some buses arrive earlier than others. The kids have some time out on the playground whenever possible to just enjoy themselves and they do. And that's been a really, really successful feature. And so we don't want to do away with those things. We'd like to continue with those. But we're looking for opportunities for collaborative and shared course offerings between the middle and high school. We, we still think that that's an untapped resource, having our older kids connect with our middle school kids. Certain courses lend themselves to that, certain mentoring opportunities. These are things that we are excited about and looking forward to. In the after-school, at the secondary level, before and after-school programming. So the flex block really will provide students with academic support as well as opportunities to make up assessments and check in with teachers. We know that that time, because things are all squeezed by lack of sunlight in the fall especially and winter, but winter we're inside, but in the fall for out-to-outside sports, we feel that pressure because the sun's going down later and later. And with school getting out later, we had to come up with ways to ensure that the, the support that students were getting between the close of school and the start of their after-school activities was sufficient. And so John, with his team, has worked out that the flex block will provide that extra support time for kids in addition to time between the close of school and the start of athletics or other after-school activities.
Can I ask, how did we, how did we create the flex block? Like what, what did we take away? What did we take out?
We reduced classroom time by about four minutes each. So we kept our passing periods the same and we essentially reduced each of our, our classroom instructional times. Because at the high school, there's one block that's 60 minutes because we do some additional announcements in the morning. There's another one that's 57. So they, they're in different places, so we grabbed time from there. Another key component is it also allows, if and when we do have to dismiss for athletic contests, students will not be missing instructional classes. Key component.
Mr. Smith, that also, that three minutes will be somewhat offset by moving some of the programming that to date has occurred during the day to that flex block such as assemblies and meetings and such?
Yes, that's correct. So at the high school, we have something called town hall meetings. We have class meetings. We have a number of different shorter gatherings and we also will put those at that flex block time. So once again, we are maintaining the integrity of instructional time students have in those six blocks a day.
So as, do you want me to, want me to, okay, hang, hold it, hang on. I'm almost done actually. So the one other thing that, you know, was mentioned before, but obviously a priority is kind of the health and well-being of our students. That is a priority for the school system. Advisories was actually built into that action plan. The challenge for John and his folks has been, well, when, when do we do that? So the flex block actually allows him the opportunity to have those advisories and the format of those advisories or when they run has not yet been established. Is that right, John?
That's correct. But we're doing some piloting this spring, but then obviously we won't be in the new schedule, so those advisories will take place during classroom time. So we will be calling students, but we should not be comfortable.
So just very quickly, advisories are really an opportunity for students to work with someone who may or may not be their teacher, preferably not, because it's an adult in the building who they can form a relationship with, who doesn't necessarily grade them. But advisories are intended to have a curriculum, so they meet the state's standards of time on learning because they're supposed to have a curriculum. There's a specific thing that you're speaking about or working on or concentrating on, but they provide a tremendous layer of support that we believe our kids need. So another thing that, that has been done is Emily Sullivan, our athletic director, who's done an outstanding job as a new athletic director here at Dover Sherburne, is really working to adjust practices and competition sites where possible and necessary. So this is going to take some energy on her part, reaching out to other ADs to see if we can finagle our schedule into a setup where hopefully our kids, and it's not etched in stone by any stretch, but hopefully our kids who are traveling long distances can, can get those set up earlier in the fall than later in the fall when there is more daylight. But that's, that's something that, you know, we've come up with along the way. We figure, we believe that next steps are really finalizing what the before-meeting schedules will look like. And by that, I mean working with faculty to arrange as many staff-related meetings to the early morning hours as opposed to after-school. The, again, you, again, the, we need to continue the effort to work on our scheduling and, and finding competition sites that will work better for us. Just as an example of that, I know in the past, the, because my daughter was on it, the kids were swimming out in Melford. The new site for competitions and some practices, I believe, is Babson and, and, or Kingsbury. That's dramatically different. So Kingsbury will not be for competitions. I think Babson will be for competitions, but some of the practices hopefully will be held at Kingsbury, John?
Yes.
And so that really makes a difference. So those are the kinds of things that we, we have to continue to look at.
I'm almost done, I promise you.
So the staff implications, the Kate, Kate McCarthy and Stephen Roblesky have been meeting with teachers at every building to kind of hear what their major concerns are and what things we can do to kind of respond to their challenges. At the end of the day, they want definitives. What time will faculty meetings take place? And this stuff has to really be worked out. We can't just unilateral... We can't just unilaterally say our, our, our faculty meetings will be at this time. So this is, these things are in part negotiated. And we are having conversations with the teachers about how that will work. As far as the communications, one of the big next steps for us is to, is to work with challenged success to see if we can bring in speakers to talk about managing sleep of young people. That's not an easy thing, they call it sleep hygiene. It's, some people don't have all the strategies that are proven to work, especially with young people and adolescents. So we believe that we could do some more community education in that regard, and we hope to do that. We also, as I mentioned before, know that we would like to, we'd like to study how this is going for people, so that we can stay nimble. And if it's not working, then make decisions to address it. You've seen this slide before, our next set of updates will be in April, and then the final in June, and, and then the rollout in two thousand twenty. So, any questions?
I have a quick question.
I appreciate, one more time, I appreciate folks coming out, so I may turn it over to these guys, because they may be better able to answer some of these.
I was curious if the advisory, the advisory program and time allotted for that is going to be just at the middle school level, or just at the high school level, or also at the middle school level? That's great. I think that sounds like a great addition.
I do, too.
I can't tell John and Ann enough how much I'm excited by this new schedule. I think it presents a lot of really fabulous opportunities. And I know, I remember that I, I think we've talked about project-based learning a lot this year. Will, will you be able to use that block to encourage creating opportunities for project-based learning? Have you looked at that?
So, yes, we have looked at that. I think a lot of that will still take place during the instructional blocks. But students could have opportunities to collaborate on those at that time. So let's say, for example, they're in a science class, they're working on this project, they had that class the last block, they can now transition to the flex block and continue working on it, or continue working with that teacher.
Yeah, and I, I imagine it'll be, it'll be a lot, it'll foster that kind of collaboration, because they're, for the most part, if they're not seniors, they're going to be there anyway during, during the flex block. And so, it seems to me like it's the perfect opportunity to really accelerate those, that, those types of learning experiences. I, I just think it's wonderful.
So I have a quick question. There's a lot of talk about scheduling at the secondary level, and I'm going to, I'm going to say, I think it's probably because of the uniqueness of having different classes that you go to, the way the schedule is set up, to make sure that kids can get out to go to their after-school activities, you know. I think the important ones are, some of our students, believe it or not, have jobs, and people rely on those around here, so there's jobs, there's the arts, there's everything else that we've talked about. So there is sort of a uniqueness of the scheduling on the secondary. In terms of the primary elementary school kids, is it because they're more with the same teacher in class for most of the time? There isn't the movement into as many activities as there are, that we focus on secondary first? Or can you tell us a bit more about scheduling in the elementary?
Yeah, I mean, that's the bulk of it. The, the elementary schedules are really not changing. The middle school schedule is not changing. The, their, their time of start and end are changing. So we don't anticipate changes to kind of the instructional approach at the elementary levels, or middle school level, other than changes that are being kind of implemented as a result of kind of portrait of graduate work, or kind of innovative instruction, or different kinds of project-based learning-type activities. That kind of stuff may be happening simultaneously, but it wouldn't be driven by the start times. But what could conceivably be driven by start times, as I've mentioned before? But I do think it has to kind of happen, kind of, it has to, it has to develop. I, I think that there will be opportunities for expanded elementary activities after school. But, but again, you know, destination imagination, for example, that is a parent-run operation. So I can't, the start times task force can't just declare, "Oh, we're going to do destination imagination after school." The parents who run that might say, "Actually, that's not going to work for us at all." But it may, it's just that it allows them that opportunity. And that's what needs to be explored more fully. And that, a lot of times, when you make changes like this, you don't realize the benefits until you're doing it. And I will give you an example. At Wellesley High School, when we put advisories in, there was a lot of, "Hmm, I don't know about this advisory thing." Over time, advisories started to run our news program, and they blasted it to the classrooms during the Friday afternoon advisories. And then, they said, "Wouldn't it be cool if each advisory ran the news program, you know, and we rotated through?" And that allowed for greater bonding and getting to know kids outside of your friend groups. So that was a really nice thing that developed over time. We didn't plan it that way, it just happened. And John and Ann have already talked about that a lot in the process of having conversations about the schedule. And I do think that that will happen, but it hasn't happened at the same rate. Definitely not the same. Excellent question.
Anybody else on the committee?
I think it's a quick question. Could you speak to where we are with the Metco students, and getting them here, and all that?
Yeah, so, so our Boston students have a difficult day. Right now, all kids, K to twelve, ride in at the same time and start, start their bus ride at five-thirty-ish. Get out here to the, is it the elementary schools first? Elementary, no, secondary first. Yes, right, so they come to the secondary first and arrive, do you know what time the Boston kids arrive, John?
About seven-ten.
About seven-ten. And so, and then, and then the kids who are at the elementary schools go over to Pine Hill and Chickering. And obviously, the bus doesn't split. So they go to Pine Hill first, and then to Chickering. In the afternoon, they are picked up at Chickering and then go to, sorry, they're picked up at the Regent first, then Pine Hill and then Chickering. So, if you just think, I had hard enough time explaining it, just imagine having to go through that. So that's a really challenging thing for the kids. Ideally, as we've discussed in the past, we could have two separate runs. We have forty Boston students. And so Don has spent a lot of time exploring that possibility. What we're running up against is a couple of things. First of all, Eastern Bus, who contracts with us for our Metco transportation, doesn't have small buses. They don't use small buses. So for each bus, we do have a driver, and we also have a bus monitor. It's, but it's not as much the cost that's, that's, that's not so daunting. It is a big expense. But what's really the challenge is, does it, will it be practical to transport the kids later in the morning? Because, as you all know, if you've driven into Boston, once it heats up, it heats up, and every light is congested. Every stop takes more and more time. And we just haven't ironed out whether or not that run, a second run, is going to be practical. We did get some good news from, from Boston that all Boston students, including Metco students, can now get a Charlie card that allows them to travel on any of the Ts, including the commuter rail out to Needham. So that has potential for us, but it-
So can I add the word thinking outside the box? Ann had a great suggestion at our, our task force meeting last week, and that Monique, Ann, and myself are having lunch with the Metco high school students, because they have exams next week. Because we want to talk, like practically, how could, how could we get you? We were even thinking about the older kids' bus. Right now, at night, when the cabs take the kids home, they take them to Ruggles Station. So maybe there's a way we can get all the kids to get to Ruggles, and that's where the bus picks them up. So we're going to explore with them and get some ideas of what would work in their life, and put that into the play, and not rely just on Eastern trying to figure out the two buses. So we are exploring that.
Two conferences, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, but we still have, we're still in discussion, because the one thing that we had that Eastern did tell us is they did have a half-bus that was coming off lease from one of their other districts that we potentially could use. But I think the issue comes down to the travel time, what time they're leaving the city. So that was the bigger obstacle.
And, go ahead.
Because the other, if you think, we, we pick up, we pick up all over Boston. So that's, that's why the traffic is an issue. And if we could centralize them in one spot, we thought we might have a fighting chance to do the two separate.
That's where I was going to go, that's where it's getting complicated, because the admission to Metco process is changing. And in fact, traditionally, our students come from certain sections of Boston, so that it's helpful in terms of transport.
Well, it's still pretty spread out.
But it could be even more spread out, under this new model, from what I'm hearing. And that could really, really complicate things.
So it is top, is one of our top priorities if we're working this, is the exit.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee, to Dr. Keo, or any of the administrators who are here? Okay, with, oh, Maggie?
I guess, just to echo what Lynn asked regarding the buses, you know, I just would ask that you keep it top of mind. I, I understand all the logistical things. I think it's important to respect the desires of the students that are current students, but also with an eye to, you know, the next generations of students, because, you know, some of our current students are not so enthusiastic about this, but sometimes we do things that are, we think are in their best interest. So, you know, not just to say, "Well, they thought it was okay the way it was." And then if it does end up that they are at school much before all of their peers, it just, whatever you can do to create a comfortable lounge space, I will feel very, very upset if we get to next year and I find out they're sitting on a bus, or they're sitting on a bench. To do this for some and not for all feels very uncomfortable, so I, it just, whatever we can do.
So we would, because we do provide programming at our elementary schools for those students who arrive before start time. So it would just be flipping.
Right, and I just, well, I just feel like, in the idea that we're not providing any other program for any other children, because we all want them to stay late, but these, like, there's a lot about this that makes me feel very uncomfortable. So I charge you to do everything that you can to keep that top of mind.
Thank you. Is that it? All right, so now we're going to move to community comments. So if you were here earlier, as I stated, we're going to open it to the community comments. So just like I said, just make it a respectful dialogue. And if we can just try our best, because there are quite a few people here, to not repeat something that has already been brought out, because we are truly listening and we understand your concerns. So if we could just try to keep it in that fashion, if you'll just state your name, just so we know who you are, because some of you we haven't met before. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Ann. I am new to town, so it might have been discussed last year, but I'm not aware of it. With the new start time for the elementary school, that means that some of the students that weren't benefiting from the after-school hours at the school might need after-school care from the school. And if they are lucky enough to get that after-school, because when we arrived in town at the end of July, and I inquired about after-school care, they said we are already full, so we don't take anything. So if you're lucky enough to get after-school, that means for some of the elementary students that they are already in school from seven-thirty, seven-fifty in the morning, they are adding more hours to their schedule. So my daughter is in kindergarten, and when she gets home at three-thirty every day, she's already exhausted and cranky. So adding one more hour to her schedule, I know it's going to burn her out. So have you discussed any of these issues regarding the elementary school students? She currently doesn't use any after-care, because I can get home and get her. But with the new start time, she's, she just have to get the after-care. And I hope she can get, because I've just heard that it's going to go first to the existing after-care student, and then if there are still space, hopefully you expand your after-care program so that you can also get more students in. Have you discussed this, that the extra hours in the elementary school students who are really little and need more rest during the day? Would that be something that has been discussed, or?
So I want to make sure that we're clear about the after-care, because we're not excluding anybody. The goal is, we just need to know by May, because we're going to accommodate all of those. That was what that, that was, that statement was for, by Don Fattori. So I just want to make sure, so there will be. And as for, you know, sleep adjustment schedules, that's what we look to, the studies about. So it has-
Just to add another point, she is already complaining about waking up at seven in the morning, so I'm not really sure how to wake her up at six next year. So that is another struggle that we are trying to adjust, but it hasn't happened yet.
And I understand, and as we said, it's just a change, and we're going to see what we can do and just work through it. That's-
Hi, I'm Jackie. First of all, I commend everything that you're doing with the middle school and high school. You know, I do think that it's great for those students. I guess I have two comments. One, and I agree, I think, you know, the early start time is challenging, not only for us as working parents, but also for your teachers, right? They're not going to see their kids in the morning as they go to school also, which I'm sure you've talked to that community as well. But that makes it harder, and I'm sure it makes it complicated if you try to attract talent, right? You want to be able to make sure that you have a continuous opportunity for talent to come in as teachers. I think the second thing is, you know, the after-school time to the point of, you know, being able to either A, wake them up in the morning, but B, be able to actually get them to go to Med by eight o'clock, so that they get the nine hours of sleep that they're going to need in order to not have developmental issues, or to have, you know, attention deficit disorder. These are the times when they're really developing, and they're growing so quickly. And I know that there is extensive research in the older population. It's just the younger population, there isn't as much data, right? So I think it's really important that we just consider the longer-term effects, because even if this is a pilot, if you started this process for high school, you know, in 2015, by the time you're piloting and changing it again, you know, all of our kids will have gone through and sort of suffered that timeframe. But I think that the most challenging part is really the loss of time that we have with our kids after school. Right, everybody here has to work, and we value the time that we have. And we'll have like one hour of time every day to be with our kids when we come home. You know, and I think that's, that's the heartbreaking part, right? We really value, sorry, we really value what you're doing here for the older kids. It just seems like it's at the sacrifice of the elementary kids. So I appreciate, again, the bus solution, right? I know you're trying to make that much more efficient, and try to make that timing work out better. But if there's anything that we can even do as a parent committee or parent team to figure out, is there a way, if the bus is the biggest, you know, deterrent, is there something that we can do to either help get financial contributions, or think about how we split up the buses in a different way? You know, to me, that seemed, as I looked at the problem, that the bus was the biggest challenge.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Catherine Roddy House, Sixth Francis Street, Dover. As you can see, I have kids that wake up at bedtime, so probably in the video footage you hear lots of background noise coming from some of my children, not even all of them. moving from some of my children, not even all of them. So it's definitely important enough that I come. And I, I'm still trying to come each time because it's important enough. I kind of feel like the Lorax just keeps on going up and just knocking out, like, I'm here, I'm here to speak to elementary school. I think everything that you guys presented about the high school, I'm seeing, like, everybody here has been extraordinary. I'm really happy. It's amazing to see all the pieces are coming together. But I think we still haven't, I know, Super Tony spoke about that one of our priorities is the health and wellbeing of our students. And I think that's great. I think this is totally a positive move towards the health and wellbeing with high school students. But I don't know anyone that's made the argument that's towards the health and wellbeing of our elementary students to move them earlier. And I don't think that they're mutually exclusive. I mean, other towns have found ways that we can flip them. And I don't know, again, I feel like I'm on the Lorax, that maybe I'm just not talking to anything that's up for discussion at any point. But if there is any way that we could ever possibly reconsider when the elementary starts, I don't think we actually still have to start that much earlier. You know, even if you just work it in your head, these kids, their bedtime is 7:30. So with the new start time, they'd have to be in bed by 6:30. We're asking Dina to run till 6:30. Like, how are they even getting dinner and being able to go home? I mean, there's not a lot of time there. They, you know, their father doesn't get home till shortly before seven, if we're lucky. That's their one time of day to see him. So this would mean that they don't see their father throughout the whole week. We just moved summer from Connecticut and he could have commuted on Amtrak, but I'm like, no, I want you to be able to see your father during the week. It mattered enough to it. But now, that's not going to happen. And like I expressed in the last meeting, so I don't want to be too repetitive, but I mentioned that I have another infant who's not here with us right now. I'll have to drag the babies down to the consolidated bus stop because I believe that was a proposal in order to make sure we can, like, consolidate bus stops so we won't be needing the houses anymore. So in the, I'm just thinking, if I have to drag everyone out there, I'm going to be driving to the school because if I have to get everyone out of the house, it's much more efficient having the vehicle at that rate. And I, again, if it is buses, then I don't think, and most people are not going to be hauling it down to the curb to wait with the babies and the toddlers and their siblings, then, because again, middle schoolers and high schoolers can wait for the bus on their own. Elementary kids, particularly the younger ones, are not allowed to wait for the bus on their own, nor would I recommend it. So it really involves the whole family in a different dynamic than it is for the older kids. So if it's just a bus issue, again, I'd only think, the buses at this point, I noticed, are like half-full, like, on a regular basis. I mean, I think it's going to be even less. So, anyway, I'll stop so I can get these guys out of the bus. I do appreciate you letting us come. But that's, that's my speech.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I guess I'll play the other side of the coin. So Susan Akeroni, 174 Harrington Ridge, in Sherburne. And I have two elementary school kids, and they'll be elementary school kids next year. To pry my children out of bed at seven o'clock in the morning is the most painful experience right now, that one can experience. So I can appreciate. But it's going to be tough next year. But the greater good and all of the science and all the hard work that everybody over there has done has proven to me, hands down, that you can adjust the sleep pattern of your kids at a young age. Science has proven it. And I can't refute science. You can adjust the sleep pattern of your young kids and get them up earlier and get them on the bus. We're talking about 45 minutes earlier. I am the farthest from this middle school in Sherburne. I am the farthest from Pine Hill, where my house is. It's going to be hard. It's going to be adjustment. Every community that these committee members have reached out to has said, first year of growing pains, it's painful. But you figure out a way, you make adjustments, your elementary school kids are on the bus earlier, you go to work early earlier, you come home earlier. Those are the things that, as a family, for the greater good for the entire community, although it may be hard that first year, it's an adjustment for the long-term benefit of middle school kids and high school kids. I have a middle schooler. He walks out of my house at 6:40 in the morning to get on a bus to come to this middle school. He does it in the dark. He doesn't do it alone. I go out there and walk him up there because he's there by himself at 11, 12 years old. But that's just what I do. So you just have to adjust. Because the long-term, again, for the social and emotional wellness, I don't have a high school kid, but that's the issue. We're hearing about these kids' behavior, suicide and depression and whatnot. We have to address that. And I think this is a great step towards doing that. So I commend all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Yes, I'm Rick Aaron.
Well, I was pointing to her, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. She was getting ready to speak.
I think she's going to pass me. That's okay.
That's fine.
Okay, Rick Aaron, 28 Valley Road in Dover, run a preschool in Dover. And the last 10 years, I've been pulling kids out of cars every morning at these young ages. And I agree with some of what you said, that children are pliable and you can definitely get them up and force them into a schedule that's going to work for your situation. But what you're doing is you're pulling them into an adult world. And I think for the greater good, you come up with a balance. And we, I've thought about this many times. I have a 32-year-old and a 30-year-old. I've thought about adolescents and their sleep deprivation issues. And I care about that. I am not against a later start time for the middle school and high school. I'm all for it because it's going to help them in their adolescence and social, emotional behavior. But I'm also not up for sacrificing elementary students. And I think this flip is a lazy way to do it. I think the way this passed was very fully done. When you talk about trust and communication, when you look at this whole situation, I mean, I've heard you say, this has been a compromise. When you take something away from one group and give it to another, and you give them something special value, it's out there, clear notification, that's not compromise. Now, I can honestly say, from all the families I've spoken to in the elementary schools, that wasn't clearly defined on that survey at the beginning of April, that the flip was going to be the only option. And to put these families to a 45-minute earlier start, I think you live in an alternate universe. And I don't mean to be offensive to you folks, but you drove here on Dover and Sherburne roads here tonight. Now, I don't know if you've pictured this, and I know that maybe logistics isn't your business, but I know when we first started at the corner of Center and Cross Street, we had to get plans from the town to put in a driveway, make sure we didn't have cars backing out of Center Street. Now, for the last nine months, no one from the school committee has talked to the police chief or Craig Hughes, the, you know, who handles the highway department. You've got to think about the logistics. You're moving traffic from 810, 840 at Cross Street to 7:30 to 7:55. I mean, what is going to happen there? And Pine Hill, there's only one way in and out of Pine Hill. I mean, that's just logistics. This is people beyond this room. That's something you have to deal with. I mean, I talked to the chief, he said he's going to get traffic removed, make sure nobody gets run over. We're going to get the buses rolling through chickering. I know there's only six drop-off spots, we can park cars, you know, we could, we'll be creative. You know, the school committee has got launch here, so they can do what they need to do and we'll be reactive to it. Now, so I understand that. But there's a way to do this where you balance everybody and you meet the needs of the elementary students socially and emotionally and the middle schoolers, the high schoolers. We've talked about bus optimization, maybe do an 820, 850, or push chickering out a little further, the elementary schools out further for later start time. Plenty of Boston schools do it. There's a way to do this without putting elementary families in that situation. But I am really disappointed with how this whole thing went down. I mean, I don't mean to be, it's not about enlarging the school committee, but what happened back on April 30th, I found out on the 29th that this was going down. And then on April 30th, when I came here, I mean, Andrew, I know you're working hard. I know you're doing a great job. And you've worked really hard and the special education, I'm all for that. I have a son with special education issues when he was younger. I was involved in parent advisory council, I think, by President Act group. So I understand all kinds of issues. But the trust in communication, I don't believe the families in chickering will possibly, I don't think it was made clear that the flip was going to be the only option. And this whole flip option divided many communities already. Houston, capacity, people in Wayland are afraid to speak up. It's just, it's pitting neighbor against neighbor. If people are against a flip, it doesn't mean they're against adolescents from getting their sleep. I know it's important. We don't want more suicides. We don't want more sleep deprived. None of us wants that. But we don't want to set up our elementary students. One time I had to get my grandson up to go to school early. We had to get out the door and say, Papa, why are you waking me up in the middle of the night? His sleep time is seven o'clock as well, 7:10. And I don't know how I'm going to explain to him. And I don't want to force him into an adult world. Again, I'm working with three- to five-year-olds every day and their families. So I'm asking for another rethink of this. I think 820, 850 might be more reasonable. But we're taking this to the state. We're dealing with our legislators right now. My hope is you'll be getting a letter from them that will address this. Why do we need to divide communities over this issue when there is a workaround? And why wasn't chickering families notified that flip was going to be the only option? Seemed a little, and another thing, you were getting your evaluation that night. We all sat and heard what a great job you were doing. If I was on the school committee, I would have been high-pressed to say, you know what, Andrew, I don't think that's a good idea. Because I believe in you. So just for me to say no would be like a no confidence vote. And I'm not about that. I want to do what's best for the community. I know you people work hard. I know you try to be thoughtful about this. And you're here, what, at least once a month, and you're away from your families. I get that. I understand that. I thank you for your service. But I think we rushed into this. And I know for the last three years you've been working on this, but elementary families are going to have a challenge with this. And you've already heard people speak. Younger kids can get up earlier. Yeah, they can get forced into an adult world earlier. But I can tell you right now, a lot of my families aren't going to be too happy about this because they have to adjust their child's schedule first. And I think there's a way to work this around. I think an 820 start and a 850 start would be coming closer to a compromise, a real compromise, not where you take the buses in the times in the elementary room and you just do it that way.
Thank you. I'm going to have to move to her now. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Colleen Berg at 52th Yorkshire. I have two elementary students. I worked previously as a classroom teacher and then also in psychiatry at Children's Hospital. I can tell you that Maslow's hierarchy of needs is not going to change because of our shift in start time. So getting kids' sleep and food is actually imperative to their morning appointment. I know that I worked with the population that often didn't have breakfast before school. And I was able to, in my school, give them food. That's not an option for chickering teachers. I have a question. Has it been explored to have a breakfast program for these elementary schools? And that would be more of a soft start to the day. And that would cut into instructional time. But what I'm saying is the outcomes that we want, that we have, we are here for, the parent population that is here for the school, that we expect from our schools and our students, we're not going to get those sorts of outcomes if our kids don't sleep. My kids don't eat before seven. They just simply don't have an appetite. So they're, I'm going to be putting them onto the bus, exhausted, without breakfast, hoping for the best in this adult world that I'm throwing them into. And I don't feel unfair. If you have a kid with mental health issues, I see this. This is, this is why I'm upset. It's upsetting because I know what we're about to do to a very vulnerable population. And chickering has a fair amount of specialized kids, kids with mental health needs, and those are going to get worse. I can guarantee it. If they don't get sleep, one of the biggest issues I worked with in Children's Hospital was working on sleep issues. And the youngest kids, of course, the adolescents were struggling. That was, that was the population that got the most attention. But the youngest kids that I worked with, it was awful. You can see suicidality in four-year-olds. You can see suicidality in six-year-olds. I saw it. It's very disturbing. And I don't want to see that in our school population. I don't. And I really appreciate the push for the more sleep for the older kids. I absolutely believe in that, wholeheartedly. But I do believe that a compromise is necessary to protect our most vulnerable, and that is our youngest kids.
Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, Dan Kahn, 33 Tupperware Drive. Spoken a few times here before. I'll be brief and blunt. Think you made the second-best choice for our students. I would have expected you to make the best choice. It's not too late.
Anyone else? Yes?
So, just a few things. I guess, I guess I was-
I'm sorry, I didn't, what question?
John Loughlin, 21 Floodon Street. I guess I was expecting to hear whether we had reassessed the decision. Was there any point where we reassessed the decision based on many, I think, serious concerns that were raised in the last few meetings?
No.
You know, I think it's been, everything's been said, right? I don't know, though, that there's any science that supports the fact that having less sleep for five-year-olds is not an issue in terms of their ability to learn. I know it will be for mine. I think 45 minutes certainly might not be a long time. But it's also the time that it takes for it to go from darkness to light, 7:00 AM. It's also the amount of time that I have to spend with my children every night. It's an extremely valuable amount of time, 45 minutes. You know, I think the community might have wanted this when you look at it as a homogenous pull. It's not a homogenous pull. There are different interests within that community. And I think when you take the rights of one and sacrifice those for the benefits of another, you need to have a process that properly represents that group, okay? And even among committee members, to make sure that that committee member is representative of that community, of people who have elementary school students. So clearly, we are where we are. I think the hope that I have is that we think about whether there is a compromise still in the starting time. And also, if it doesn't happen this year, there's another year after that, another year after that. And every year that goes by that we don't fix this problem, I think we're not serving our elementary school students well. People live in this town because of the school, and these towns, Dover and Sherburne. They come here, they live here, they sacrificed to be here for the schools. That's why we're all here, to get a good start in life. If this start time impacts that, competes that, I think we're making a mistake. And so I think the, you know, the first priority, obviously, trying to find a balance and see if there's a way to push the start time up a little bit, maybe. But I'd say for the following year, can we fix this? And I think it was raised, can we get people involved in fundraising? I mean, there's solutions here. And we'd love to be a part of that. I do appreciate the sacrifices that you all make to serve the community here. I think there's a lot of us who are willing to help if we know how. You know, how can we solve this together? I wish there were more time. I know my children will struggle with this. So, but I'm hopeful that it won't be lost and that we'll find a solution. So I guess that's, that's the sum total. Hopefully, you know, we can find a better way.
Thank you. So that's our community comments. And I wanted to thank you for your comments for tonight. I just want to close by saying that as school committee members from the three different committees, what our task is, is to do what's best for our students first and foremost, but also for our teachers, facilities, budgets, towns, and the taxpayers. So any change that we support is evaluated based on all of the stakeholder needs. We understand that the change can be challenging. And that's why we consider these changes extensively and thoughtfully. So the decision to change the start time was made by the school committee last April. And it was after a year-long, transparent, and inclusive process. And the school committees now are, our focus is supporting the professionals, the building leaders, the administrative team, and the teachers. And we're going to implement the new start times and try to address the complex needs of our dynamic district. And as Dr. Tekeo said, we're going to do this organically. There are things that we're going to learn along the way, and there are things that we're going to do. So as a community, if we can all support each other, it would be truly helpful. Thank you. So with that, we're going to move on to the next part of our agenda. We have to approve the 2020, 2021 calendar, believe it or not. What I love is that we are starting in September because Labor Day is increasingly late.
Why don't we start after Labor Day? Just, just to get a twist?
Well-
Yeah, no, I know. But you just end the summer, you tear-
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's, it's late this year. And we're getting out late this year. So it's all late. So it's all late because it's late. So have you-
We basically, we basically, you know, have stuck with tradition.
Yeah. That's fine, I'm not, we'll-
No, no, but to answer your question, every year when Labor Day is moving in one direction or the other, it feels like, we adapt the schedule according to what we've adapted in the past. So what would've been seven years ago that this came up?
Yeah.
I would think too contractually, because it's the teacher contract.
Start before the Monday before Labor Day.
Right.
Yes.
It's in the teacher contracts.
So, like everything complicated.
I think those are still to be determined, the professional days, if that, if I'm not mistaken, we just, those are TBD, and we did this last year, too. We didn't have them specifically set. It says TBD. And as you see, the half-days, then they come on and, you know, we decreased them a large amount, it seems like, this year.
We did include the November 30th professional day because it falls right after Thanksgiving. Some people are traveling, and that's proven beneficial to both sides. The teachers like having that day for PD, and I think it helps our families a lot. But other than that, the half-days are yet to be determined.
Can I say that under the 30th, November 30th one, it says no school, but then under the half-days, it also then says no school?
Yeah, that shouldn't say-
So that's just a typo.
That should just say Professional Development Day, not no school. Yeah.
Unless you wanna give them all?
No. No.
I was also noticing that the winter vacation isn't all highlighted. December 24th and 25th and 31st are, but the full week isn't.
Oh, you mean on the calendar part?
Yeah.
On the grid.
On the grid. So it should be 24th through the 31st.
Which is what it says.
Yeah, it says it on the side, but it just doesn't have it on the calendar part.
It's a short break.
Through, yeah, through the first, sorry. No, that's not, oh, it's not.
It's gonna go to two weekends.
It's almost, yeah, it's longer than they usually get.
Yeah, it's long.
It's gonna come back to school till the 4th.
Yeah, 'cause they want, 'cause it's a weekend after that.
Yeah, they just don't-
Yeah, so it's going to be a very long time at home. Hopefully, there's lots of snow to go outside. So with that being said, we need to vote to approve this calendar, so we have to do this by each, by district. Do you have any?
I was gonna say, maybe you can mirror it. I was gonna note the updates.
Note the trial, why don't you start it with yours?
Yeah, so I would say for Dover, do I have a motion to accept the school calendar as presented in our packet for 2000, school year 2020-21, with the update on the teacher professional day to say scheduled half-day, as well as in the calendar, just highlighting those days if we were to present it in such a manner that are reflected in the calendar on the left.
And noting the professional development afternoons are TBD.
And the professional afternoon development are TBD. Dover, do I have a motion? Rachel, second. Thank you, Leslie.
Okay. Pine Hill Committee, Sherburne School Committee, same. Do I have a motion to approve the 2020-21 calendar as noted, adding in that we will change it so that the teacher professional development day is a half-day, not a no-school day, and is TBD, and that the grid calendar will reflect that the dates off are the same as noted in the side to begin on the 24th of December and goes through until they resume back on January 4th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Amanda, second. Mike?
All right, the region, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Dover, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Sherburne, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Region, discussion?
When will we get dates on the half-days? Just 'cause like for working families, it's actually-
We usually don't get them till the summer.
Okay.
Usually February, March.
Is it February 1st?
The sooner the better.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed, abstained? All unanimous, thanks.
So that's moving on. So we have in here for a subcommittee update-
Policy.
On the policy subcommittee, has one, Lynn does. And I, there was an email sent, so if you did not get back to me on my committee and had anything, you're welcome to raise your hand after.
I can be very quick. I can say there's a bunch of policies and we're working on some stuff. So articulate. But yes, so I get, all right, so there's a lot of stuff suddenly going on. Thank you, Beth.
Suddenly going on.
So with respect to current policies, the bullying policy, we're working on scheduling the biennial review, which is sneaking up on us already. And looking at, as you may recall, we had to do a cert, we were supposed to do a DESI survey every four years, and we don't think that one has been issued yet. So we're sort of trying to sort that out, figuring out if current reporting, things that we do will meet the requirement if we even need to. So we're, there are things going on with that policy right now. Dude, we, Beth has spoken with DESI, right? Is that what it is? Yeah, and they've highlighted a few changes to some of our existing policies that need to be made, and it's mainly tweaking language, you know, adding the protected classes that have been added since the last revisions of the policies. There's a couple of new policies proposed or suggested. One for, let's see, one for military children, which as a military, former military child, is at the top of my list for priorities, just for, just to set out rights and responsibilities to military students, and also children in foster care. And then the communications task force has asked us to take a look at the social media policy, just, you know, because social media changes so quickly that it's important for us to sort of stay up to date on, you know, what the laws are, what other districts are doing. So we're looking at that as well. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So I'm on it with you with the bullying policy. So we submitted that initial one-
Yeah.
And we're just waiting on the rest of the-
Yeah, I mean, the policy is all set. It's just that we are obligated under the statute to review it every two years, and then that, that policy, the statute requires this four-year-
The DESI.
Yeah, and they didn't, near as I can tell, they haven't issued a survey yet.
It may be because the, we've been participating in the Metro West Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which speaks to bullying. So I wonder if that's why the administration through the years has felt like that data was sufficient, but that's a good question to look into. The other thing I was wondering, Lynn, have you by any chance reached out to MASC? Because they always have a list. Do you have? Okay, did you say that?
No.
Oh. Because I would've missed it.
Yeah, no, and in fact, they have policies updated, in fact, just as recently as October, on specifically the military policy, the children in foster care, and the homeless students. They've got samples, so I think it's gonna be a straightforward process, just we need to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does the region have a presentation on the Metro West survey data as part of your, any of your meetings? Do you have-
We have not done a presentation.
We have in the past, but have not. For the most recent one.
Isn't it made public to the compares, though, or no?
Yeah, but the-
It's posted.
Yeah, it's available, but I-
We have it.
I'm just wondering if there's ever been a more presentation, or we could suggest one to the joint committee. I know it still is relevant to elementary students and extremely eye-opening, looking at that data, particularly on vaping data, and I don't know if we have time, I don't wanna add anything to our agenda, but I would be really interested to-
We haven't had a joint school committee meeting that wasn't packed, but I agree. If we're gonna make a commitment as a system to the social, emotional well-being of our kids, how can you not, as the leaders of the district, not take a look at it?
Data in there.
I do think that that's something that we could arrange to have happen. I think it probably makes the most sense to work through Kate and his counselors because they administer it usually.
I wanna make more work for you.
Or analyze it, but I think that we could be more deliberate as a system, and it was always a curiosity to me, so.
Yes.
Right now, I think we only have the summary results, right? We don't have, like, the raw data hasn't been released yet, so maybe, I don't know, maybe it makes sense to give that to-
Enough data to, I think, be of interest of what was just released.
So can we just, can we have the chairs? Next meeting, Andrew? No, no, I said, I think that's a really good point, Brooke, and I appreciate you bringing that up. But we'll talk next time just because it's, you know, people are probably hungry.
Tired.
And so we'll figure out, if we have the data, we'll coordinate with Kate, because she wants more on her plate. And then we'll see if there's a time that we can meet where it's not budget in the next couple of months. So it might be a little bit later, but I think that's a really good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, we do have the April meeting scheduled. For John.
Yeah, we usually have two in April anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that may be, that may be April.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Lynn, and other policy wonks, because that's, that's a lot of deep diving. So thanks.
Lynn is our leader, and she's-
Yeah. She transposes things over things to show us where it's different, where it's not. It's like diagrammed out. It's amazing.
That was Ann's suggestion.
It was great.
So thank you.
Okay, so is there any other subcommittees that if you did not get back to your chair, that there's something you'd like to bring to our attention? You're welcome to. If not, we'll just consider that you're moving on and doing what you need to do. Okay, so finally, we're going to go to the approval of the October 22nd and December 10th, 2019 minutes. Did we not approve the October one?
It's not.
So Dover, do I have approval to, do I have an approval for the consent agenda dated, I'm sorry, for the agenda from October 22nd to December 10th as presented in our packet? Leslie, second. Rachel, thank you.
Sherburne, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for October 22nd and December 10th, 2019 minutes as presented?
So moved.
Nancy, second. Mike?
Region, do I hear a motion? Second.
All second.
Thank you.
Dover, any discussion? All in favor? Approved, thank you.
Sherburne, is there any discussion? All in favor? Approved, thank you.
Region, discussion?